Regular session of the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas will now come to order. The time is 6:00 PM November 5th, 2015. Item number two is the invocation followed by the pledge. The invocation, believe my Mr. Plowburn, please stand.
Good to be here with you. Father, we're thankful for what you're doing in our lives and in our city. And we see the reflection in our city of the hearts and the minds of the people that are leading us. We thank you that we have people we can trust, that we can believe in, and we can follow with discretion. And we thank you that we have this meeting tonight. There are going to be some decisions made, and we pray that the Spirit of God would have an overriding influence on the discussion, the plans, the approvals. And Lord, help us to keep making money in an honest way and distribute it equally.
In Jesus' name, amen.
Face the flag, hand of your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Item number three is a roll call. Ms. Pacifica.
Here.
Mr. Sines.
Here.
Mr. Best.
Here.
Mr. Flores.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Oh, here.
And Mr. Hall.
Here.
All members are present. Item number four is departmental reports.
Public Works Director's report is submitted as submitted, as well as the other department heads. Our department head report will be given by our new park superintendent, Mr. Leach, this afternoon, and that will be followed by the city manager's message and the mayor's message at that point.
Evening, Mayor, council.
Evening.
Evening.
First and foremost, I'd like to say what an absolute privilege it is to be a park superintendent, just completing my first month, and I've enjoyed every minute, and I'm excited about the future of the parks program.
We're happy to have you.
I'd like to give a quick assessment of what I've seen the first month, as well as hit a few highlights of some of the projects we've done. First, I'd like to really praise the parks crew. They've handled this change really well. It's a very knowledgeable and hard-working crew, and it's made it very easy for me to transition into this position. And they've adjusted really well to my management strategies and what I've asked them to do. First thing I noticed about Pleasanton is the use of the parks. Every minute of the day, there's someone down there doing something, and it's absolutely great to see. Been a lot of use, a lot of youth. I think we have five different colors painted onto that soccer field. Gets a lot of use, a lot of activity down there. We've also, we've been able to use our new field striper, which should save a little bit of money in paint, as well as efficiency and time. One of the few things I've started is irrigation with the fields. I did a full irrigation audit on the senior field, found numerous things that need to be adjusted. It's going to be a longstanding winter project. We're going to go through each station head by head and really get, go through it all and just make a lot of improvements. We've already begun that process. And then, once we're able to complete that, we'll be able to consistently and continuously monitor the irrigation. That way, we can keep up with the proper irrigation strategies there. We recently applied 1,800 pounds of a 19-0-19 pre-emergent fertilizer, which should give us about five months of control, control our winter weeds. That'll be followed up in early February with a spring help keep down the summer weeds, something I'm excited about. It's a slight change from what we've done in the past, or what has been done in the past with pre-emerge. We should be able to see a little bit better weed control.
What was there? What was that that you're putting out?
Yeah.
It's a 19-0-19 pre-emergent fertilizer with a pre-emergent impregnated on it.
Thank you.
Something else we've really been focusing on is just the details within the park. I think it's benefited me being here, just having a fresh set of eyes. You know, things get skipped from time to time. Once they get skipped once, sometimes they get skipped twice. So, a little bit of focus just on weed cleanup, a little bit of touch-up paint here and there, and minor repairs throughout the parks. We're going to continue that. Of course, that's an ongoing process throughout the parks. Another thing I've noticed is the east side of the river. There's a lot of big, really nice, appealing oak trees. We've begun cleaning that area up. It's really not really accessible, but from an aesthetic point of view, it'd be nice to have that area cleaned up. We've begun that. We're going to continue it through the winter. Another thing that we've begun is remeasuring and edging and tilling the sports complex fields. There are some areas where we found as much as three feet of encroachment of grass into the soil playing area, so we cleaned that up, and we're going to start making the correct adjustments there as far as the playability of the park. Other than that, you have my report. There's a lot of things that we've done, a lot of the same usual maintenance things, and then a few new things. I'll open it up to questions.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
This isn't a question, but it's more of a comment. You obviously have a great deal of knowledge in dealing with the landscapes, and it would be, I think, really interesting at some point if maybe you could have a workshop for the people of the city and just kind of talk to them about how to deal with that weed control and those little birds that get in the yard and stuff like that.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's a very good suggestion.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
City managers, city manager's message?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Our manager's message this evening, we addressed the meeting's calendar under the consult agenda. You all might recall because of some of the parameters of annexation hearings and notices, we could not set our holiday calendar accordingly as we have the last three years. However, we do have it under the consent agenda this evening to cancel the second meeting in November and the first meeting in January. We do have to have the two meetings in December this year. Our Parks Master Plan and the contract amendments will be ready to be presented to council officially next Thursday evening. The mayor was presented with that, with the plan and those contract amendments at 4:00 this afternoon to see if he had any changes that he wanted to make since he was at the forefront of what a lot of this Parks Master Plan entails. We will have those presentations after the public hearing next Thursday night. The consent agenda items, I might mention, we've noticed over the last four, five, six meetings, especially where it has to do with variances to the building code, whether it's setback requirements or some of the other things that are involved in the building codes. We've also noticed any discussion action items that deal with traffic closures based on 5K runs or events such as Halloween night. The council has expressed the comfort with the staff recommendations in such that the discussion action items really never took place, it went straight to motions by the council. So, we have begun to place some more things under the consent agenda. You'll see it this evening. There are two variances under the building code for the setback requirements, and obviously the meeting schedule as we move forward for the rest of the year. We'll continue to look for ways to streamline our business meeting based on council input and council comfort with some of the things that the staff presents from time to time. This evening, we were going to present some notices of merit, but I don't see the folks that we were going to present them to here this evening. I think work schedules caused a conflict, and those folks are probably home sleeping right now, so we'll defer that to the next meeting. That's our message for this evening, Mayor and council. I'll stand for any comments or questions.
Questions for Mr. Pearson? Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you.
Item number six is the mayor's message and announcements. I have none. We'll move on to item, agenda item number seven. It's the first public hearing by the Pleasant City Council for the purpose of considering annexation of property, 74.8 plus or minus acres of land located generally north of Goodwin Avenue at Farm and Market, 3510 between Pulliam Drive and Woodland Drive in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. This is a public hearing for input and questions.
Mr. Stewart will read the service plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I wanted to, for the record here tonight, this is the first public hearing concerning this proposed annexation, so I wanted to, for the record, read the service plan into the record. So, if you'll bear with me, I will attempt to read as the mayor wrote. This is the service plan for annexation of approximately 74.8 acres of land in the Nancy Makedo survey, Act 565, Atascosa County, Texas. Upon annexation of the area identified above, the City of Pleasanton will provide city services utilizing methods by which it extends services to any other equivalent area of the city. Services provided by the effective date of the annexation. Number one, police protection. The City of Pleasanton, Texas and its police department will provide police protection to newly annexed areas at the same or similar level of service now being provided to other areas of the city with like topography, land use, and population density as those found within the newly annexed areas. The police department will have the responsibility to respond to all dispatch calls for service or assistance within the newly annexed areas. Number two, fire protection and emergency medical services. The City of Pleasanton, Texas and its fire department and the Pleasanton Volunteer Fire Department will provide fire protection to newly annexed areas at the same or similar level of service now being provided to other areas of the city with like topography, land use, and population density as those found within the newly annexed areas. Atascosa County, Texas contract provides for EMS services and will provide EMS services through to newly annexed areas at the same or similar level of service now being provided to other areas of the city with like topography, land use, and population density as those found within the newly annexed areas. Number three, maintenance of water and wastewater facilities. All of the newly annexed properties within the Water and Wastewater Service area of the City of Pleasanton. Existing water and wastewater facilities owned by the City of Pleasanton shall be available for use. Number four, solid waste collection. The City of Pleasanton, Texas contracts for the collection of solid waste and refuse within the corporate city limits of the city with republic services allied ways. Solid waste collection will be provided to citizens in newly annexed areas at the same or similar level of service now being provided to other areas of the city with like topography, land use, and density as those found within the newly annexed areas. City may negotiate with annexed areas to allow continued services with an existing solid waste management provider. After the second anniversary of the annexation date, the city will impose fees and provide the service. If areas with private roads and/or gates are arranged so that garbage may be collected without creating a safety hazard, the city at its discretion may collect the garbage provided proper indemnification is received from the community association or individual property owners. The city will then impose fees and provide the service. Garbage collection locations shall be subject to the approval of the supervisor of community development. In the event the city does not collect garbage within the areas with private roads and/or gates, residents of these areas may build for the service after the two-year date. Number five, maintenance of roads and streets. Any and all public roads, streets, or alleyways shall be maintained to the same degree and extent that other public roads, streets, and alleyways are maintained in areas of the city with like topography, land use, and density as those found within the newly annexed areas. Private roads will remain under the ownership of the landowner or homeowner's association if applicable, and as such maintained by the association or landowner. Number six, maintenance of parks, playgrounds, and swimming pools. The City of Pleasanton is not aware of the existence of any publicly-owned parks, playgrounds, or swimming pools now located in the areas, proposed areas of annexation. In the event any such parks, playgrounds, or swimming pools do exist and are public facilities, the city will maintain such areas and facilities to the extent and degree and to the same or similar level of service now being provided to other such areas and facilities within the corporate limits of the city with like topography, land use, and density as those found within the newly annexed areas. Private facilities will remain under the ownership of the homeowner's association or landowner, and as such maintained by the association or landowner. Number seven, maintenance of any publicly-owned facility, building, or municipal service. The City of Pleasanton is not aware of the existence of any publicly-owned facility, building, or other municipal service now located in the proposed area of annexation. In the event any publicly-owned facility, building, or other municipal service does exist and are public facilities, city will maintain such areas and facilities to the extent and degree and to the same or similar level of service now being provided to other such areas and facilities within the corporate limits of the city with like topography, land use, and density as those found within the newly annexed areas. Number eight, other services. The City of Pleasanton finds and determines that such services as planning, code enforcement, animal control, library, parks and recreation, court, and general administration will be made available after the effective date of annexation at the same or similar level of service now being provided to other areas of the city with similar topography, land use, and density as those found within newly annexed areas. Construction of any capital improvements to be completed within two and a half years. Number one, police and fire protection and solid waste collection. The City of Pleasanton, Texas finds in terms that it may not be necessary to acquire or construct any capital improvements within two and a half years of the effective date of the annexation of the particular annexed areas for the purpose of providing police protection, fire protection, emergency medical services, or solid waste collection. City has plans to conduct a feasibility analysis for additional fire protection facilities in the area, in the vicinity. Until such time as the feasibility study has been completed and the council directs further action, the city finds and determines that it has, at the present time, adequate facilities and other resources to provide the same type, kind, and level of service and protection which is presently being administered to other areas already incorporated in the City of Pleasanton, Texas with like topography, land use, and population density as those found within the newly annexed areas. Number two, water wastewater facilities. The City of Pleasanton, Texas finds and determines that it is not necessary, the City of Pleasanton, to acquire or construct any capital improvements within two and a half years of the effective date of the annexation of the particular areas being annexed. Number three, roads and streets. The City of Pleasanton, Texas finds and determines it is not necessary to acquire or construct any capital improvements within two and a half years of the effective date of the annexation of the particular annexed areas. Number four, maintenance of parks, playgrounds, and swimming pools and any other publicly-owned facility, building, or service. The City of Pleasanton, Texas finds and determines it is not necessary to acquire or construct any capital improvements within two and a half years of the effective date of the annexation of the particular annexed areas for the purpose of parks maintenance, playgrounds, swimming pools, and other publicly-owned facility, building, or service. Number five, concerning maintenance of a current septic system. Any resident who currently utilizes a septic system to manage wastewater shall be entitled to continue said system except for the following. Should a septic system located within 500 feet of an existing sewer main fail to the point where repair costs will exceed the cost of replacement, the property owner shall be required to connect to the sewer system. Specific findings. City of Pleasanton, Texas finds and determines that this proposed service plan will not provide any fewer services and will not provide a lower level of service in the areas being considered for annexation that were in existence in the proposed areas at the time immediately preceding the annexation process. Given the proposed annexation area's topography, land utilization, and population density, the service levels to be provided in the newly annexed areas will be equivalent to those provided to other areas of the city with similar characteristics. Terms. This plan shall be valid for a term of 10-year. Renewal of the service plan is at the discretion of the City of Pleasanton, Texas. Level of service, nothing in this plan shall require the city to provide a uniform level of full municipal services to each area of the city, including the annexed areas, if different characteristics of topography, land use, and population density are considered a sufficient basis for providing different levels of service. Amendments. The plan shall not be amended unless public hearings are held in accordance with Chapter 43 of Act of the Government Code. So, that concludes the annexation service plan for the areas which we've identified, and I can turn the public hearing back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the public. I'm available for the duration. If there are any questions.
Okay. Is the service plan, I haven't looked, is it available online? Can you make it?
Yeah.
That way, if anybody wants to look at it after the meeting to review it, it'll be online by tomorrow.
[laughing].
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Pacifica.
I just have a question. I don't know who can answer this, but on the maintenance of the roads, if the roads are not in good shape, why is it our responsibility to fix them? Why can't we get the county to do that beforehand?
I can report tonight that the county commissioner that's in charge of that precinct has already began working with the city, and we're working towards a joint effort to resurface all those roads. Based on material on hand and a working relationship with the county, we've just begun those discussions, but we do recognize the necessity of those roads needing some help.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Yes, sir. If you'd come to the mic and just state your name and your address.
I don't know who you are, but...
For the record, we need to know who you are.
My name is David Klepp, and I live at 102 Weezy Lane in the proposed annexation area. And I was just listening, and I've got some things here. First off, I would like to know, we've lived there since, I guess, 99, and prior to moving out there, they told us that it had been tried to be annexed previously or whatever. Just to go through this, I'd just like to know why and what was the criteria for selecting that area. Answering the questions on police protection, if we have problems, which we've had out there before, because I've had people try to break in, I just call the sheriff's department, they come out, everything seems to work fine. Fire protection, emergency medical services, we already have that through the county and stuff. Maintenance of water, we're already hooked up to city water facilities because we get a city bill every month. Solid waste collection, we already have that. Maintenance of roads and streets, the county does that. They've come by, not within the last two years, but when there's been problems, they will fix them. Okay? But, I mean, they pretty much keep it maintained and stuff. I mean, it's travelable. Where there were some potholes recently with the rain and stuff, they came, filled them all in.
Moved it all out? Everything's fine?
On the parks and playgrounds, there aren't any. There's not any facilities out there to put anything. On the maintenance of publicly-owned facilities, there aren't any. Other services, code enforcement, I mean, that's fine to go within the city and stuff, but then you've got all these codes and stuff. Are they talking about, well, I don't understand code enforcement. Are they talking about, we're going to follow the same codes that are in the city limits?
Correct.
So, like, I got a question. If I have hail damage to my roof, okay, and I want to put a new roof on, the insurance company's going to pay for it, do I have to get a permit to put the roof on?
Yeah, you do.
Yes, you do. To ensure you get the job done right, that's what we're going to make sure for.
But, that's what the insurance company's going to mean. I don't understand why I have to have a permit because it's an act of God that the hail came and stuff. I mean...
Yeah, this is, you know, we've done this process one other time since I've been on the council, and it's, you know, it's kind of the same thing from last time, is, hey, I already get all this from you. You know, what I need from you, I already get, so why are you, why are you annexing?
I mean, I understand building permits and things like that. Have one if I paint my house?
Not paint.
Not if I paint? If I hire somebody to paint?
No.
Okay.
I was just curious.
About the roof and stuff. But, anyway, construction and stuff, there are no waste stations or anything. I mean, there's a water tower.
We have a plant, a water plant out there, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's out there, but, I mean, there's, that's it. There's no police or fire. Roads and streets...
But, there would be police and fire.
I have the sheriff's department. So, I mean, I don't...
They don't have a track trip.
To me, it's just a matter of getting more taxation.
Revenue.
I guess, revenue and stuff. And, I mean, there's 97 parcels out there, and I know what the city tax rate is, and so if I put that mathematically to what I have, I'm looking at somewhere between $500 and $1,000, give or take. If you multiply that times the 97 people out there, you're looking at anywhere from $60,000 to $97,000 of revenue. I mean, what about all the areas that are west of Crestline? Nobody's touching that. And then, when you look at the map, and then like, oh, I mean, Deer Run, nobody said anything about that. And then, when you look at the map here and stuff, there's three vacant lots, actually five vacant lots over here. How come they're not in here? I mean, I just don't understand.
Well, as far as who drew it, I'll have Mr. Pearson explain that.
The vacant lots aren't in there, we'll ask for voluntary annexation if they develop those vacant lots.
Okay. What about the lots west of Pulliam?
I'll have to look at the map to see specifically what you're speaking about, but Mr. Stewart will be available after the meeting to visit with you.
Okay.
And part of that is, you know, when you're doing this, you've got to draw a line somewhere, right?
Right.
And they figure that out. That's not something we say, hey, let's just draw on here and whatever. You know, there's a method to the madness.
Right, I understand that. You know, I just feel like we're being picked on because of the, you know, and I know it looks like a subdivision and stuff, but I didn't know if it had to do with lot sizes or, you know, and then I was wondering, because the properties west of Crestline are closer to the city than what we are, and...
Well, they're both, they're butt up just like y'all are, but, you know, the, that's kind of the question at play to be, how did we decide that this was the very next?
We felt that that was the next logical step after the last annexation, and all those other properties he's mentioning are in the future land use assumptions and are part of the master plan.
And part of it is, you know, you've got to, we've got to look at it from the city's standpoint and say, what is, what's the natural flow here instead of, well, we did an annexation on kind of the west side, now it's doing on the, you know, it's not how we do it.
Right.
It was chose because it was a natural progression as far as our master plan. Mr. Best.
And we can only take so much at a time. We just can't go out and get all of it at once.
Right.
So, that's why there's a progression. The properties you're talking about, as indicated, they're coming too, but it's a certain percentage they're allowed to do with each annexation.
Okay. I was just wondering, because like, when you read what you're proposing that we're going to get out of this, we already have all that. The only thing we're going to get is an extra tax amount.
Well, that...
Understand what I'm saying? Yeah.
No, 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 I'm not laughing at that.
No, no, no.
I'm laughing, the last time this happened, they came in, and the argument was, well, we don't get anything from y'all. Why are you annexing this? And I said, well, what about the, well, yeah, we get that for free already.
No, we don't get anything. I mean, we're hooked up to city water and sewer and things like, yeah, I understand.
Those rates will go down as being part of the city. I don't know what the...
Because I know that we, excuse me, I know we pay a higher rate because of where we live and because, and it's not that much more, but when you figure what we're going to gain by getting a lower rate, we're still going to be losing money because our tax rates...
So, here's the give and take there. So, for the city to be able to continue to service, you know, there's things that you look at, and one of the things is, okay, we can annex this and have it part of the city and offer water at this, or we can just really start raising the rates for those that aren't in the city.
Right.
So, in other words, if you're not a member, it's going to cost you a lot more.
Right.
It's been tough in the past to do that because once you set utility rates, to raise them is just like, it's a burden. You know, you've been expecting this, and now all of a sudden we're paying this because we're in the county? Then you feel like you're getting penalized because you're not in the city. So, it's one of those, it's a double-edged sword, but for the city to justify to say, okay, look, you're already getting these services from us. I mean, and I know as well as you do, if you called the police department, they're not going to say, you're in the county. Click. You know, they're going to come.
I know.
But because of that, those reasons are why we look at that and expand the city into those areas.
And don't forget fire.
Well, fire protection too, that you should, and I don't know what it is, we probably should have looked at it, but, and it's going to depend on carriers, but a lot of carriers, if you're in an incorporated city that has fire protection within a certain distance, which, just so you know, we're putting a fire station in right at the airport. Right when you turn on the airport road, it'll be about 400 feet in, right on airport road, so you'll have fire protection within a half a mile of your, of your house.
Are they going to put any streetlights?
Well, that would be something that if that's, you know, needed. We've had people in the past come and subdivision, say, it's too dark right here, and, you know...
We had, we had streetlights in dark areas. The police department's asked to drive the city at least twice a year. We have input. We just added two streetlights, one downtown in front of a business owner establishment, but from time to time, we do add streetlights as we see necessary. Yes, sir.
Like I said, I just had some concerns and stuff, some questions, and, you know...
And this is a first hearing. We will have another one, but he'd be more than happy to answer any, and we'll have the service plan up. We will have another hearing, so if something that you didn't think of tonight comes up, please come back.
Okay, no, that's fine.
And if you have any questions, obviously, you can call us or, you know...
My number's in the line, too, so...
Okay, good.
Well, I appreciate...
And we may, we may, if y'all want, you can drag him out there and talk to him in the...
Oh, no, 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 no. Oh, no, 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 no. No, no. I, I, you know, I'd just like to see what, no, no, you know me, I...
No, I know.
But, I, I appreciate y'all's time, and, and thanks for listening to me, and, okay.
Well, we're here to answer those questions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions or comment? Close the public hearing, move on to agenda item number eight, which is presentation discussion of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, bid result for the general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand fifteen. Mr. Freeman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'd like to introduce Tom St. John, he's working with Mark McLean and I as a financial analyst, wanted to get him out. This is his first public meeting, um, get to see what it's all about. You'll remember from six weeks, two months ago, you authorized a bond ordinance to refund a series of bonds for debt service savings. At that time, we were looking at between two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of savings. On October fourteenth, we received bids, that's what I want to review with you this evening. Top page, we received eight bids from local and regional banks throughout the state that had an interest in purchasing these bonds. You can see Whitney Bank, which is based out of New Orleans, Louisiana, and has started moving into Texas through Houston, won with a bid of one point seven nine eight percent. They beat the market by twenty-three basis points, so an incredible, incredible rate that we wouldn't have otherwise gotten, so we were able to take advantage of a bank that was new to the space, that really wanted to get in and buy a deal, and here we are, the city a beneficiary of that. With that, and I'll, this is the exact same refunding we looked at, I'll direct you to the second to last page, the savings. Like I said, we were looking at between two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of savings. Second column from the right, total savings, four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. That's roughly forty thousand dollars a year from now until twenty twenty-seven. So, we greatly exceeded the expectation of, of the interest rate we were gonna get, that generated an additional sixty thousand dollars in savings just by beating the second place bid. So, we're very, very thrilled with that. The bond sale was actually done six weeks ago, you authorized us to move forward, so long as it met the savings parameters that we were looking at, either Mr. Pearson or Ms. Bandy could sign and execute the legal documents, which they did that next day. So, this is really just to brief you all on the outcome of that refunding, but we were very, very pleased with it. Again, like we spoke about when we issued those certificates of obligation earlier in the fall, our credit rating is what's getting us these great interest rates and saving us even more money. So, really, for you all to keep a keen eye on things like our fund balance, implementing good policies and procedures is why we're getting these great rates, why we're getting great savings. It's saving the city money year after year for every bond we issue, and we're paying less than we otherwise would. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this process, but this will close on, I believe, November eighteenth, and we'll have the savings locked in.
Great. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I just want to reiterate, when we did this before, we had expected somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of savings, but what we actually got is somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of savings.
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Good job.
Thank you. For, for you all and the city staff, you do a tremendous job running this city.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Item number nine, citizens' comments, or if you're a citizen over a taxpayer too, you may speak at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes, though the council and staff may not comment. We do have Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Byrd, and Mr. Daniel, in any order, whoever gets there first.
Well, I, I'd like to lighten the session up just a little bit. Johnny and your crew down at the park, I'll, I'll say an amen to Mr. Leach's comments. These guys are always available, they keep the park clean, they keep the trash up, they keep the lights on, and when they aren't on, they have Chico as a backup, he comes over and turns them on for us, and we appreciate that, and you've got a lot of happy campers down there because those lights are going on and the courts are available, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd.
And we talked about, you know, a lot of things, I'd like to talk about some people. We had a tournament here, Mike Wood, who is the athletic director, allowed us to get into the gym for a tournament. We had eleven teams come from all around. We had two teams from San Antonio, Teen Challenge came down, we had four or five teams from this area here, and it was a good turnout, and if you read your little article in there, at one point in time, I don't know which the end point, but it seemed like there was a business service instead of a gymnasium and a basketball tournament. And that's what's going on with these kids. We don't just put on a tournament to fill up the slot and to have things, you know, exciting. We're trying to get these folks to appreciate God and respect Him and make Him a part of what they're doing. And if you remember last year, we had Rock and River, this is the fourth one we've had, and we're having again this Saturday down at the park, and we have professional entertainers coming in. Last year, and Officer Sanchez, I'm sure will be happy with this, we took eighty-eight people off the streets because they dedicated their lives to God, and that's an influence that's going on that you don't hear a lot about. So, as a citizen comment, I'd like to encourage you that things are going on as a result of you all doing a good job. We appreciate it, and give us that support and prayer that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Daniel, I'm with the Pleasanton Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here in regards to Cowboy Homecoming. We received some concern from a council member in regards to the cancellation of the parade, and so I wanted to appear before y'all to see if there was any other, any other concerns towards the chamber that I could answer for y'all. I wanted to give y'all an idea of how the timeframe of Cowboy Homecoming, on Friday, we had all our events, we started out with the cowboy breakfast, and then we had the entertainment, the tractor pull, we had a brief amount of rain, but for the most part was clear. We met throughout the day on Friday to decide if there was going to be a parade or not. We continued to say, yes, we're gonna have it, yes, we're going to have it, and it wasn't until approximately eleven PM that we decided the hurricane is shown to arrive at eleven AM, and the parade is scheduled to go off at ten, so we just, we felt that it was best for the safety of everybody to go ahead and cancel the parade, and we also noted that, you know, all, all other events would go on if possible, and we would keep everybody informed by social media. And at approximately ten AM, it started raining heavily, at eleven AM, they decided to close the park, and we just canceled all the events after that, and that's kind of how the timeframe went. And so, also, just, we've had some comments in regards to rain insurance. We did have rain insurance, however, the way rain insurance works is you have to select a certain time, and unfortunately, it did not rain within the timeframe, and so we were not able to collect rain insurance. And so, without the city's support and our sponsor's support, the chamber would be in a world of hurt, and therefore, I just come before y'all to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all have any questions?
Any questions? Oh, yeah, it is, that's right, citizens' comments, so, we can't take any, can't have any questions.
Okay.
But we appreciate your...
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hall.
Will there be a possibility of putting...
We can't ask, we can't ask questions or make any comments.
I can ask you a question, though.
No.
I can.
Not on citizens' comments, it's only for the citizens.
Never mind.
Thank you. Any others? None will move on to item number ten, which is a consent agenda. Item number A is approval of the minutes of the regular session of October fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. Item number B is approval of the preliminary plat for the Pleasanton Intimated School and Junior High School subdivisions, and you recommend approval?
Yes.
Item number C is approval of the preliminary plat for lots two A and B of the Xander subdivision. Again, you recommend approval? Item number D is cancellation of November nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, and January seventh, regular scheduled Pleasanton City Council meetings. Item number E is approval of a variance of title fifteen, land usage one fifty dash, or one fifty point zero one, building code paragraph K, minimum setbacks requirements for any structure A, twenty-five foot from front of property line four, twelve oh two, Vivian Street, and that is recommended for approval?
Yes.
Item number E is approval of the variant of title fifteen, land usage chapter one fifty point zero one, building code paragraph K, minimum setback requirements for any structure, twenty-five foot from front of property line four, seven twenty-one, High Meadow. Again, you recommend approval?
Yes.
That is a consent agenda.
What's happening on these, at these addresses?
It's in the packet.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
It's been moved to the second, approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, N, F, any discussion? None will proceed to the vote as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, post the same sign, motion carries. Item number eleven is discussion, an action to erect historical marker honoring G W M. Duck, former sheriff, tax collector, and prominent citizen, Ms. Westbrook.
Thanks for hearing me tonight, I appreciate it. I am the chairman of the Adaskosa County Historical Commission, and we seek to place, we seek approval to place a historical marker for a public servant, served the county for close to forty years, coming to the county in about eighteen fifty-three, from Puluski County, Kentucky. He settled in an area around what's now Somerset, Old Somerset, and had a land grant there. He served as constable of precinct nine, which was bare at the time in eighteen fifty-four, and when the county was formed, he served as, was elected county tax assessor-collector and served in that capacity for about fifteen years. In eighteen seventy-three, he was elected sheriff, and he served for close to twenty years as sheriff, and, and so is the third longest running sheriff in the history of the county. He also gave land for the Pleasanton City Cemetery, and Duck Street is named for the family, and, um, that's about it, he's very deserving of a historical marker. We, there it is, we, we looked at a spot, Mr. Pearson and I, on this side of two eighty-one, primarily because he did work out of three of the Adaskosa County Courthouses that were located right here in this spot, and on jails as well. And so, the spot right there, as you see in front of the flagpost, would be a nice location for the marker. The only requirement the state has is it has to be accessible to the public, so people have to be able to drive up and, and look at the marker. The marker that we're going to place would be the second one down, the smaller marker, the eighteen by twenty-eight. Now, the marker that you have for the City of Pleasanton across, across the road is the top one, which is twenty-seven by forty-two, so this is a much smaller marker. Pay attention to the, the cost, because it's already funded, I'm not asking the city for any money. Okay? I have a deadline of November the fifteenth to turn in the application, and I need a form signed that gives permission to place it on the city property. Any questions?
Questions?
Mayor, I might add, there's been some questions about the placement. Ms. Westbrook informed me this evening, the placement can just be decided later by the council, it's just merely the permission to place it on city property, because there has been some discussions about whether it should be across the street or on the side route.
So, not, we're just deciding whether we want to...
Just deciding whether to place it on city property.
Okay.
Can I make one, one more comment in, in terms of, of placement? There are other markers of civic leaders that, that we need to, to place, and, and I, for instance, John Bowen is one, the founder of Pleasanton, and I think it would be very nice to place that one near the Pleasanton marker, and there's, there are others that we, eventually will get placed, so I want you to keep that in mind, sometimes when you get too many markers in the same location, it, it, it's not attractive, so...
Mr. Wood.
Do you have an idea of how many you're looking at? I know that there's four or five that founded this town, and I was wondering if you have an estimate of what, what you're looking at, so that we know what's going on.
I, I, I can think of at least three that I would like to place somewhere near the Pleasanton marker. John Bowen would be one, Raditz was his, his financial partner, A.G. Martin would be a good one. I'm thinking at least three or four that would be nice to put markers up for.
About five, so that's what I've got in mind, so whenever we look at the location, we have an idea of how many we're looking at. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
It's just a comment, I, I think, I agree, I think it would be really important to have a, a plan or a strategy on how many folks we want to do over a period of time, you know, some approximate ideas of location, they can be defined as each one is placed, but it would be better, I think, to have more of a comprehensive plan or strategy instead of just, why this one and this one? Because you're, you know, if you, you pick one, and then you kind of don't look at the others or don't have them on a, on the radar, then people are starting to, you know, choose sides, well, why'd they pick this one over this one? So, that's why I think...
Before we get too far off task, we're really just deciding tonight if we're gonna allow the placement on city property.
I understand, I just wanted to make the comment.
I'd like to, Mr. Mayor...
Of course.
I'd like to, to table the decision on, on the whole thing, to give us more time to talk about this before others might come up, placements and so forth, the safety issue with being put there, slowing down traffic, and things of this nature.
If you were to do it in the form of a motion to table, it would be to discuss later to postpone, it would be discussed on a different date.
We'll discuss it at a different date.
Are you, are you gonna make that in the form of a motion?
I'll make that in form of a motion.
No, no, would you make that in the form of a motion?
I move that we, the table listed, have a discussion on it a later day, to give us an opportunity to look at the whole thing, as to who might have a priority.
Can I, can I clarify by saying you're moving to postpone agenda item number eleven?
Yes.
Could I make one comment?
No, ma'am, not yet. There's no sec...
I'll second it to give it the right to vote.
It's been moved to the second to postpone agenda item number eleven, any discussion? Those in favor of the motion to postpone, please raise your right hand, post the same sign. All right. We still have agenda item number eleven in front of us. Ms. Westbrook, you had a comment?
My only comment was that I have a November fifteenth deadline to turn in the marker, and I need to put an address on the, the application. If we don't do it by November the fifteenth, we have to wait an entire year, because the, the period for markers is September first through November fifteenth, so essentially, I'm running out of time on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hall.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Westbrook?
Yes.
That's right.
Before we get too many more questions, though, we are gonna have to have a motion, because we really don't have anything to talk about as of yet, but, but go ahead, Mr. Hall.
Am I, am I allowed to make a question?
Mr. Hall's got the floor.
I simply would like, thank you so much for your presentation. I would simply like, if you would briefly kind of bring me up to speed on how and why Mr. Duck was chosen.
The way markers are chosen, that you, you need a sponsor. Typically, you have a sponsor who's willing to pay for the marker, first of all, and write the history and do the research to do that. It requires a narrative, a historical narrative, that's very well researched and at least five to seven pages long. This one, I've done this one, this one is probably eight pages now.
So, be, it came from your decision?
Yes.
I see, okay, thank you.
And the Historical Commission as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to erect a historical marker honoring G W M. Duck, former sheriff, tax collector, and prominent citizen.
Second.
It's been moved to the second to erect a historical marker honoring G W M. Duck, former sheriff, tax collector, and prominent citizen, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
The main reason I'm interested in trying to move this forward is the fact that you do have that November fifteenth deadline, I think it's prudent because of the fact that we would have to wait a whole another year. I understand the discussions going back and forth of, you know, who, who could've, should've, would've, but that, that's the main reason I'm, I've kind of moved to a point of support a point of support for this.
Other discussion? None will proceed to the vote in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, motion carries. Item, thank you, Ms. Westbrook.
Thank you.
Item number twelve is discussion, action to accept the resignation of Larry Pippin as the city Pleasanton's representative on Atascosa County Appraisal District Board of Directors. This one's pretty straightforward, counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to accept the resignation of Larry Pippin as the city of Pleasanton's representative on the Atascosa County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Larry Pippin as the city of Pleasanton's representative on Atascosa County Appraisal District Board of Directors, any discussion? None will proceed to the vote as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, motion carries. Item number thirteen is discussion, action, name Pleasanton's representative to the Atascosa County Appraisal District Board of Directors for the remaining term vacant.
Mayor.
Mr. Science.
I would like to put this after a discussion and do an action to nominate Plinton, representative to on the Atascosa County Appraisal District Board of Directors for the remaining term recently vacated, and that would be Mr. Joe Rodriguez.
Okay. Mr. Hall.
I have a nomination also-
Yes, sir.
-for this particular position, the representative on the Atascosa County Appraisal District Board of Directors for the remaining term, recently vacated, and that would be Mr. Peter
Any other nominations? If none, we'll vote on them in the order they were presented, Mr. Joe Rodriguez. If you're in favor of him representing the council, please raise your right hand. Okay. If you're in favor of Mr. Peter Flores, please raise your right hand. All right, Mr. Flores is our representative. Item number fourteen is ordinances and resolutions, the first reading of ordinance number fifteen dash eleven fifty-eight, abandoning and vacating a fifteen-foot alleyway on block one of the Franklin addition of the city of Pleasanton, Texas. Ordinance number fifteen dash eleven fifty-eight is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasanton, Texas, abandoning and vacating an alley one block of the Franklin addition to the city of Pleasanton, Texas, in the council district four, providing for the terms and conditions of said abandoning and vacating, directing the city manager to negotiate with adjacent Church of Christ Pleasanton for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the alleyway by request by Church of Christ Pleasanton for financial consideration concerning a repeal clause, obtaining a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Item number B is reading and adoption of resolution number one fifty dash one five, appointing Pleasanton's representative to serve on the Atascosa County Appraisal District Board of Governors for the remaining term, recently vacated, and that's Mr. Peter Flores. And resolution number fif, uh, one fifty dash fifteen is a resolution of the city council of the city of Pleasanton, Texas, appointing the city's representative to Atascosa County Appraisal District Board of Directors, repealing resolutions in conflict.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to adopt resolution number one fifty dash one five, appointing Pleasanton's representative, Mr. Peter Flores, to serve on the Atascosa County Appraisal District Board of Directors for the remaining term recently vacated.
Second.
It's moved, moved and seconded to adopt resolution number one fifty dash one five, appointing Pleasanton's representative to serve on the Atascosa County Appraisal District Board of Directors for the remaining term recently vacated. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, motion carries.
I'd vote against it, sir.
Yes, sir.
Oh, can I ask a question, Mayor?
Uh, if it's about the last item, we've already-
Well, it'd be, it'd be just one, one word or two, that's all. Uh, I don't know the person, and I'd like to have the pleasure of meeting him. If he's here tonight, I'd like for him to be introduced as a council, or myself.
Right, Mr. Flores here.
First, Flores. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hall.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Flores, if I may.
Please.
With your permission.
Yes, sir.
Please. Uh, Mr. Flores, I have known for quite some time. He lives here in Pleasanton, out in the Oak Forest subdivision. I have worked with Mr. Flores many times, uh, in law enforcement. Uh, Mr. Flores is, is a retired game warden out of San Antonio, and that's when I worked with him. He went on to be the commander of the game wardens in Austin. Colonel Flores is now retired, and has shown his interest in serving on the appraisal district board. So, this is Mr. Peter Flores.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to be able to serve, and for your confidence, and I, I, I bring, hopefully I bring a, well, I do bring a, a couple of decades of experience in dealing with state government, local government, and governance. Uh, I chose to come here, to come back here after I retired as Colonel Game Warden in Austin. This is a great place to live, and, you know, there's a saying that says that in order to affect any, any change, or do anything in your community, you have to step up and serve. So, that experience that I've gained over these decades, working throughout the state, on a local, state, and national level, I would like to bring that expertise to service to my community here, pro bono, as this, this is, and to be able to see that the governance of this committee, of, of the appraisal district, is done in a professional manner, and that it's fair and equitable. And, uh, thank you very much for your confidence, and, and for representative and councilman, I'd like to be able to meet every one of you, and, and thank you very much for your vote of confidence, and if I haven't got it tonight, I hope to get it soon. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Have any questions, that man? Yes, sir.
No.
Thank you.
Do a good job, Mr. Flores.
Uh, if there's no objection, I'd like to postpone agenda item number fifteen. Item number fifteen is postponed. Item number sixteen is discussion, action to accept contract amendments for the record services contract. Chief, do you have anything to add to what's in the packet, or add some-
No, sir, just got tweaked a little bit, and we made a couple of adjustments.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to accept the contract amendments to the record service contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the contract amendments to the record service contract, any discussion? None will proceed to the vote as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, motion carries. Item number seventeen is discussion and action, designating, designation of demolition of a structure at A, seven, one, seven seventeen, Brewmeister Street, property ID three zero four five zero, B, three twenty-two, Duck Street, property ID twenty-nine five one seven, C, six thirty-six, East Adams Street, property ID twenty-seven nine ninety-five, D, fifteen twenty-six, East Highway ninety-seven, property ID twenty-nine six eighty-one, E, nine oh four, Live Oak Street, property ID twenty-eight nine seventy-four, F, four nineteen, Lyons Street, property ID twenty-three eight three eighty-four, twenty-three, twenty-eight three eighty-four. Item G, five eighteen, San Antonio Street, property ID twenty-nine seven twenty-one, H, four fifteen, West Hunt Street, property ID three zero three one three. Any questions? Or do you, do you have anything to add to what was submitted?
Yes, we do have some pictures, uh, on the PowerPoint to show you. We can go real quick through the, through the A, B, C, D, the kind of, the pictures. If you go back one piece, this, this right here is on Brewmeister. It's a dilapidated structure. When we were inspecting the property, we did see signs of vagrants. We have some other pictures, I'm not going into details, but it was in a very nice sight. In the back, there's a back structure where you will find people bedding, making makeshift, living room quarters, I guess you could call it, refrigerators, it's kind of unusual. Not unusual, but kind of interesting, and then, you know, when they're going certain places, they're do, you know, it's, it's unbelievable what they're doing out there. I, I want to leave it at that. So, we were inspecting this property, so there are signs, and you'll see the inside of this property, been like that for years, you'll see the makeshift living room up there, the bedding, and this is actually a property that the people have been deceased, we can't get a hold of anybody on the next of kin, or anything like that, it's just sitting there, just riding away. It's open to children, to vagrants, rodents, you name it. We inspected the property before, we found eggs, chicken eggs, all kind of stuff in there. The next property, right here, this is Duck Street, this is actually an occupied space. The conditions of the home inside, it's unsanitary. Look at the kitchen seat, kitchen seat is topped over with just dishes, old microwave, people actually lived in there. I, I think the, the property owner is renting this property out, and they have a responsibility to, one, make that property in a condition where it's habitable, not only for the people that are occupied in it, but for the neighboring communities and the neighbors. That's the one on Duck Street, we can move to the next one. This one right here is on Adams, uh, same thing, you'll see the broken windows, you'll see people, transit's also signed, I think somebody is also living in there. There's a blanket on the crown, on the floor with a bunch of beer, uh, cans, that they're staying there, you'll just see, nothing, this person's also deceased, they're just sitting there also, can't get a hold of next of kin, nobody wants to share the responsibility of bringing up these properties up to code, but yes, we as a community have to look at them on a day-to-day basis, and deal with this, and, and I feel that it, you know, they're fire hazards, not only fire hazard, but unsafe structures for younger kids that don't know any better, that kind of stumble into these areas. Uh, this is right here on Highway ninety-seven, same thing, structure, no running water. This is owned by a, a person, and he lives here in Pleasanton. We had tried numerous times, we did get a response, a response finally, that they want to bring it up today, but I think we still need to move forward with the process, to that way it gives them time limits to get this property in, in, in the, in a condition that is habitable. This right here, there's a lot more pictures, I don't want to go into details on this one either, but the conditions and what they're doing here on this house, uh, we kind of held back on some pictures, but if anybody is interested, I can share you that behind those doors, so, so if anybody is interested. That's the one that, and this one right here is on, uh, Live Oak, same situation, I mean, no stealing, the restroom conditions, uh, it's open to the public, there are signs, people also moving in these and living in them, no, every, every one of them has signs of somebody going in there and possibly maybe living there without permission. This one right here is on Lyons. We did talk to the owners there, we did get a response that, uh, realtor company that rehabs house, are interested in this property to rehab it. The gentleman or the owner wants to demo it, so he was asking about demo, uh, so, but we still want to move forward with this, so that way it puts those time limits on those people, and not extend the time, but we have to deal with this.
I went by that house, it's already demoed.
Yeah, it's on the ground.
It's on the ground?
Yes. Why do you need this, pick up all the trash?
Whoa. Well, they came and got the demo permit, they did get the demo permit, so if it's on the ground, they're ahead of schedule.
All right.
So they did get the demo permit, so they're, they're-
They're the same kind of pile that we're real at.
So we're making an impact, which is great to hear, because they did get it, now that I remember, they did get it a couple of days ago, the gentleman came in. So if they're on, knocking it down, that's great, so we don't have to worry about the rehab. That's a positive, thank you for that, that's positive on, on, on that note. This property right here is on San Antonio Street. The gentleman here lives right next door. We actually had a meeting with him, his name is Mr. Bailey. He has a elderly wife that has Alzheimer's in the house, and, and he's dealing that, seventy-six years old, retired police officer from San Antonio. We kind of explained the situation, and we told him we had to move forward, because he got a dilapidated house, it's unsecured, uh, so we, we explained to him that we're going to move forward on this, to give him a timeline to clean up, too, because it's, you know, it's just neglect on, on his part. Uh, this one right here is on four fifteen, West Hunt. This is actually a accessory structure in the back, they used to have a manufactured home in the front. They vacated the, and moved the manufactured home, but you got open sewer line, you got dilapidated, uh, garage, ceiling caving in, debris all over the place, storage, just sort of piles of paper, just, just there, no rhyme or reason, to be honest with you, but it's just sitting there, just deteriorating, and for us to view and take a look at, and so, uh, these are, I think that's the last one on the list, on Hunt. So those are the pictures, kind of give you a highlight why these were selected and are put on the list for, to move forward, for, to be dilapidated and remove the rubbish from this, from the property.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Mr. Percivka.
Did you talk about four nineteen Lyons?
Uh, yes. Four nineteen Lyons, Lyons, you want, that's the one that they talked about that, that demo.
Okay, because I, I noticed on the ID numbers on the document that's, that I have on my iPad, and the ID number that's listed here on the printout are two different numbers, and I just didn't want you to tear down the wrong house.
No, uh, the ID might have been a typo on the, on the discussion item, but if it's on the, the packet that's on the report, that would be the right one, because you look at the one with the report, and the, the associate paperwork that's along with it, it's, it will be the correct one by the ordinance.
Very good, thank you.
I mean, by, by the discussion action item, but let's see, I could go through that and get that corrected right away, so that way when we do make the motion, it is the one that's-
Well, we don't even have to read it, we can do A, B, C, D, if that's the case.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
Uh, you know, I, I think I've said this before, so I'll just say it again, I'm of a mind, I, I agree that all of these properties have the issues that you've indicated, but I've always been of a mind that you, you give each individual property their due diligence by making them a separate agenda item. And I understand that that would be very burdensome for council, but if, if that's the case, then we really should start thinking about maybe getting a building in Standards Commission, to start looking at some of these things as well.
Mr. Best. These are each, these are each separate, they can be, they can be done as a group, or they can be done individually, it's not dictated that they are all in one motion.
And I'd like to respond to that-
That's dictated by whoever makes the motion.
Two times ago on dilapidated structures, you asked for these to be separated into individual items, and we did that. At the last meeting, you said you'd like to see them combined back into one item. So what we did was list them A through-
I'm sorry, but I didn't personally say that.
Yes, sir, you did.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Got it.
Item number seventeen. Let me read it again, I'll read the first part, discussion and action for designation and demolition of a structure, and the items are listed A through H.
I move-
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Flores.
We move forward with the, the demolition of the structure, the structures listed in items seventeen, A through H.
Can I get you to put designate for demolition of the structures?
Designate for demolition of the structures. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, N, H.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to designate for demolition of the structures at items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, N, H. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote as in favor, oh, Mr. Wood, y'all need to, I can't see, so just, just holler mayor, or-
Uh, what's the time limit on this? What, once you send out the registered letters, what, what's the time limit we give them?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
And then, if they, as you said, like this one gentleman is elderly, if he comes in and talks to us and starts, do you, you will work with them, right?
Yes, we will work all on, but they have to have a, pretty much a game plan.
Okay.
So it puts time limits, and it puts us, and we start monitoring it, and it gives us a game plan. So if he comes and says, I have a, here's my game plan, the first week I'm going to clear out, second week I'm going to start rehabbing, so it puts time limit, then he can ask for an extension, if so be, if they don't do nothing within thirty days, respond, then we move forward with our actions as directed by the council.
I'll notice a couple of these houses that were on here, I'll go, I drive a lot all over the city all the time, and a couple of these houses, like that one on Adams Street, it's been vacant over four years.
Yes.
So I'm glad y'all are finally doing something.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just saying, at least I can remember.
Other discussion? None will proceed to the vote as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Regular session of November fifth, two thousand and fifteen is hereby recessed to hold an executive session pursuant of chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code, subchapter D, as it pertains to personnel matters, five fifty-one point zero seven four. Executive session matters may be discussed in open session if appropriate. The time is seven oh seven PM. Regular session of November fifth, two thousand and fifteen is hereby reconvened, the time is seven twelve PM. Item number twenty-one is discussion, action to accept the resignation of Associate Municipal Judge Rachel Stevenson.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to accept the resignation of Associate Municipal Judge Rachel Stevenson.
Moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Associate Municipal Judge Rachel Stevenson, any discussion? None will proceed to the vote as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, motion carries. Item number two is review of the bills.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I want to make you aware of something. In your absence here last month, the city staff put together a nice picnic and meal for us.
Uh-huh.
You were absent, you weren't there.
Yep.
Believe it or not, I knew that.
There was a platter of food sent for you, and I think that the city manager took it, and you might see him, or it weren't worth that.
In case you didn't get it.
We want to thank the, the staff and the employees for putting on a good meal for us, thank you.
Yes, thank you.